This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emanuel. Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Good evening, and welcome back to fellow council members and to staff and to all of you out here joining us for this meeting and those of you watching at home. It's nice to be back in chambers and welcoming 2020, feeling a little more recharged after a little bit of a break and obviously looks like a busy spring ahead of us. So with that, we'll get started. During our Monday meetings, the City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on important decisions we'll be making at our legislative session either tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And these chambers are in coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To those of you not able to join us in person, to watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item and following the presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then will open the item for public input. Once the item is open, please come forward one at a time and when you approach, please begin by introducing yourself with your name and your address and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. You'll see three lights before you. The green light will illuminate when you begin speaking. It will then turn yellow when you have one minute left. And when the light turns red, that indicates you've reached your five minutes and I will politely ask you to bring your comments to a close. Sometimes council members will ask you follow-up questions, so please give us a moment before leaving the podium. If you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. And if you have not done so yet, there is a sign-up sheet on that back table. So if you do wish to speak during your public commentary period, please, when you get a chance, sign your name there. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking at all in front of a podium and wish to share your thoughts or comments, there are comment forums on that same table at the back and those are presented to us before our meeting tomorrow, any of those that are in writing. As always, you can email or call us and all of that contact information is on the website or again on the table at back. With that introduction, we'll get on to the first order of business. There's one item scheduled for a public hearing in tonight's agenda. Excuse me. Agenda item number one is a public hearing on the update of the Third Ward Neighborhood Plan. Mr. Noel.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
The Third Ward Neighborhood Plan, the Neighborhood Association requested back in September of 2017 to update their 2001 plan. And so fast forward 19 years later, here we have a new plan before you from their old plan. And it's been a great process to work with the Neighborhood Association with also we formed a steering committee with different stakeholder voices within the neighborhood as well. And we'll go through this item here tonight before your public hearing and then before your consideration as resolution to adopt the plan. And then it becomes an element of the comprehensive plan, has that authority like the comprehensive plan. So just to give you a little step back in time in terms of our process, usually what happens is a Neighborhood Association requests before the Plan Commission, usually the letter comes into staff that they have a need to update their plan or to create a plan in the first place if there's one that doesn't exist. And so the Plan Commission basically has to figure out if there's a real and present need to create a plan or update a plan. In this case with the Third Ward with the multiple issues that they have, an older neighborhood, it was found to be worthwhile endeavor to spend the resources to update their plan. And so that's a critical evaluation in terms of creating a plan is that is there actually a need that warrants this work? So we created this steering committee as we had mentioned and we had five meetings that walked through the process in terms of what is neighborhood planning, all the way down to how do we engage with the residents and then looking at the draft plan. We decided to do an online survey, so every resident, whether they rented or owned in the neighborhood, got a letter that explained, you know, here's this online survey, please take this, we need your input to help formulate the plan. We had 263 people take those, that survey, which is about a response rate of about 20% or so. We also tried to engage, there's so many ways to try to do this, but we decided there's a one, there's not many businesses in the Third Ward, but there is a coffee shop and we found that that was useful to engage people and those were pretty successful. We probably had about 20 people come to those. And then we had multiple Neighborhood Association meetings to engage with the leadership and the residents. Also, the Plan Commission reviewed this project three different times. The approval process, which we are towards the very end now before you, is the Neighborhood Association has to vote for the plan and they voted originally back in August 14th, they approved the plan. And then it was, the plan draft went before the Plan Commission and the university actually submitted a letter of opposition by the chancellor that said, wait, wait a minute, we need to talk about these issues and iron things out. And so the Plan Commission directed to meet with the Neighborhood Association and the university to work on these things. And the minutes, the outcome of that meeting is in your packet in terms of what they'd agreed on and we can go through that if necessary. Then the Plan Commission, after the updates were done to the plan, it went back to the Neighborhood Association for the Plan Commission and they approved it on December 11th last year. Then the Plan Commission approved it last week, January 6th, they found no issues and found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also, the university came before that body and voiced support as well to the plan. Now the item is before you for a public hearing tonight and vote tomorrow. And then once the plan is approved, it becomes, like I had mentioned, part of the comprehensive plan. So again, the main finding that we need to make in staff review and your review is that the plan more or less equals what the comprehensive plan guides. And so land use is consistent, transportation policies, parks and so on, all that's consistent. A plan can actually deviate from the comprehensive plan, it just has to be called out and then that item needs to be worked on when that comes up. So it is consistent. Just to highlight, in the very beginning of the plan, just because it is a lengthy document, we try to show what's the major goals and then lay that out geographically on the neighborhood footprint. And so you see how these 11 goals that the neighborhood feel are of value to the work in this plan over the next 10, 15 years is to really look at the parking issue. It's been a chronic issue the last 40 years and we know that part of that has to do with the university. But to really look at that hard study of that, not in the plan, but when that project would come up, probably also looking at Randall Park Neighborhood to understand, could a permit program or other solutions be beneficial to allow the residents to be able to access and use their street if contractors come to use their street when they have repair work on their houses and so forth? So that was a major concern that was cited by the Neighborhood Association and residents in the survey. So one of the top concerns, provide housing quality, which is a concern especially for an older area like the Third Ward, promote homeownership. It's about 60% rental, 40% homeowners. And part of that has to do with the fact that it's adjacent to the university, so that makes sense. But to continue to have a decent balance on that, on those two for tenure and preserve the history, there's a lot of character in the Third Ward. Channel growth more towards the northern part closer to downtown where there is more opportunity with the zoning, R4 zoning, R3 zoning as opposed to the R1 zoning, which is single family in the southern part of the neighborhood. Redevelop appropriately, so thinking about projects and that the scale, mass, architecture of those buildings are respectful for adjacent properties next to them. To look at when street reconstructions come up, to be mindful of try to accommodate mobility for all users like we have tried to do with State Street. And to look at the parks in the neighborhood and to develop them in such ways that increase the quality of life for the neighborhood. And to continue the proactive code enforcement and to prevent crime as much as possible and to engage the residents. And so the last one's very important because the Neighborhood Association is really charged to help implement the plan, to champion the plan, and they've really championed the plan in terms of this creation process. And so their leadership is here this evening. I want to recognize Susan Miller and Kevin Rosenberg for their outstanding leadership with the Third Ward Neighborhood, their association, but also this plan has been quite an adventure and it's been a pleasure to work with them. And so we really, in the plan, we really want to make sure that the residents are excited about their plan, they can get behind it, they can champion the different causes within and work with us, city government, to be able to implement that. So that is basically the overview of the plan. I just want to call out one policy and then I'll turn it over to you for any questions. But this is probably the last major concern that we had before us, back to this issue about the university. So this is the language from the 2001 plan and this is actually the same language that is now in this 2019 or 2020 plan. And it was agreed upon, the university and the Third Ward Neighborhood Association to use this language instead of the other language. And basically it's very similar, but to keep to the existing boundaries which you see on that map. And that's the same map in the 2001 plan. And so the concern is, I've just highlighted it there, that because the neighborhood lost dwelling units in the past to Hibbert Parking Lot and so forth, they're very concerned about losing more erosion of the housing stock within the neighborhood. So that's called out. And then also that parking lots and parking solutions do not actually encroach into the neighborhood further. And this was illustrated with a recent proposal that did not become, did not come before Plan Commission quite yet. It may never happen. But the Neighborhood Association voted twice to not support about an 80 parking stall expansion into the neighborhood from the Hibbert Lot into what is the Buffington House, if you're familiar with that, along State Street, that historic property. University Blue Gold Real Estate actually owns it, or the foundation owns that property. So the neighborhood was very clear about that. That's also put in the plan, they were opposed to that parking solution. Everyone agreed that parking solution comprehensively has to be looked at, whether it's a parking permit program, more transit, more bicycling, you name it, to get cars off the neighborhood streets for parking. But they chose both entities to agree upon the existing language, the 2001 plan. Like I had mentioned, the university, Mike Rindo, the vice chancellor for facilities, did come to the Plan Commission and vocalized support for the Plan Commission that the university is supportive of this neighborhood plan as is. With that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your presentation and I just appreciate the very many conversations and work that went into this. And just one question is, you know, I understand there was a dialogue between the Neighborhood Association and the university. Were students a part of that conversation, do you know?
Yeah, I'm trying to think if the Neighborhood, well, the survey what it captured, any student living in the neighborhood and that had questions about issues that would affect the students, whether it's housing or parking, quality of life issues. So their input would have been captured that way. We didn't ask a demographic question in terms of if you're a student, but we know that that would probably be the case out of the 263 that responded. The other meetings that were more about facilities dealt more with the university's leadership in terms of their facility planning, their parking, their parking attendant and a few other professional staff that they have that plan their campus, not students.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you. This is a public hearing, and so if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item, you're welcome to come up.
Good evening. My name's Troy Turick. I'm here to represent the university. I wanted to just come, Mike wasn't able to make it tonight, so you have the B team. I wanted to just reiterate the support from the campus and we appreciate the opportunity to come back and review the draft plan and change some language that accommodate the university needs. We especially appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation around students and making sure that students were included in the, you know, in that this is a plan for all and that includes the students. So we really appreciated the opportunity to have that discussion. So just wanted to make sure we publicly acknowledged our support.
Does council have any questions? Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Rosenberg, 219 McKinley, I chair the Third Ward Neighborhood Association. This is kind of a celebration, I think, tonight that two years later, we're finally putting this thing to bed. I want to thank Ned Noel for just an outstanding job on the plan. If you actually go through and read it, it's very comprehensive and even more informative than the one that served us this long. Regarding the students on the Third Ward Neighborhood Association, I originally, when I got involved, was against having students on the Neighborhood Association because the Neighborhood Association is kind of to protect the neighborhood, so to speak, against the university and represent the residents. But over time, I've found that to be a silly opinion and really we do need the students on there. The problem with, and quite frankly, students are welcome to serve on the steering committee, the problem is the students kind of come and go and they usually come in real intense in the beginning of the semester and then as their studies and that take over, they kind of fade away towards the end as they're planning to leave or go off. So we have students at our Neighborhood Association meetings now. I think it's really important that we dialogue with the university of a lot and going forward, we are sending our agenda to Mr. Rindo and then he's free to send it to someone else. We would rather have someone from the university at the meetings because once again, there's a dialogue there. Certainly, we're going to disagree, but you know, the more you interact with people, you become friendly and then you can start to disagree with a smile on your face and it makes for better relations. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Thanks for all your work. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask, is anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings and go on to public discussion. We have three items on our agenda. Item number two is a public discussion regarding an ordinance creating section 14.04.110 entitled lead service line replacement and amending section 1.24.030 entitled deposit schedule of the City of Eau Claire Code of Ordinances. Good evening, Mr. Peppinger.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, well, members of city council. Before I get started my presentation, I'd like to show a little bit of what we're trying to remove out of our system and I just worked before. So this is a lead-lined water pipe. And looking at the pipe here, the outside here is made out of steel. The inner part, this black ring you see around there is the lead portion of the pipe. The white residue that you see in the pipe there, that's actually from our treatment process that actually lines that pipe to assure that the pipe does not leach lead into the system. This is one of the problems that Flint, Michigan had when they went to a different water source. It stripped this white coating from the pipe and started leaching that lead into the water. So I'll pass it around, it's not going to hurt you, you can take a look at it. So to get started, I think I want to spend a little bit of time looking at what a municipal water system looks like. And this is typical in the City of Eau Claire. We got the water main that is typically in the street. From the water main, we've got a service line that goes to the home connected onto a meter. And this is important because there's some terminology within the ordinance that you'll probably are new to and I just want to make sure it's clear. Somewhere around the property line, there's a curb stop. That's a water shut-off. It's a valve that's on that, on that water service that gives us ability to shut that service off in event that there's a water emergency in the house that they don't want to have the water come in. Because remember, our system is under pressure, in some areas over 100 PSI. And if that pipe breaks, that's a lot of water coming into your home at one time. There's only one way to stop it and that's on a valve, okay? The portion of the water service from the main to the curb stop is called the city portion of the water, the city main or service. From the curb stop to the meter, this is the customer section of the water service. One part about our program and a part of a requirement with our grant funding that we currently have now is that this water service, in order for us to replace the customer side of that water service, it has to be eligible for replacement. So what does that mean? That means that our section, on the city section of the water service, has been replaced previous or it's being replaced. And there's a couple of ways that that comes about. You're going to be hearing shortly about street projects that are going to be coming up, reconstruction products, projects that we're replacing water mains and services. So if any of those services that were, that the mains that we're replacing and the services that we have, if they're lead service lines, those at that time, the customer side of that service is now eligible. And with the ordinance that we're proposing, that would require that customer side to replace at the same time. That's very important. One thing we learned from Flint, Michigan is when we disrupt that lead service line in any way, there are elevated lead levels into this property for several months. It takes that long for our system to actually come and actually recult that pipe. So it's very important that it's, we replace that at the same time. They have to be simultaneously done. And I'll go through a little bit more on some other scenarios where that may happen. So what are the health impacts caused by lead? Low-level lead exposure in developing babies found to affect the behavior and intelligence can damage a developing baby's nervous system. High levels of lead may cause anemia, weakness in kidney and brain damage. And then very high levels for prolonged periods of time can actually cause death. So what does our ordinance consist of? The purpose of our ordinance is to protect the public health, safety and welfare of all our citizens that are affected by having a lead service so that we remove and replace all the lead service lines within connected to our city water service. Lead service line replacement, and this is important because future grant funding is going to require not only an ordinance, but that we're committed as a community to replace all of our lead service lines. And I've got a couple, I've got a slide here that will, it seems common sense, but these lines are very old in the city. They're not something that we put in a few years ago. Identification of the lead service lines, basically replacement of mains and services. You'll see by a map that I included into your packet, but also have on the presentation, we've been doing a lot of work with our GIS system to identify areas of our old mains and also our lead service lines that are there. One of the challenges we have is on the private side or on that customer side of the lead service line. We haven't kept record because we haven't, we weren't required to do so. It's on private property, so we didn't really have a good record system for that. But in the last three years, we've been out in these areas of the older parts of the city and we feel we have a pretty good handle on how many lead service lines we have remaining on the customer side as along with on the city side. Customer-side lead service line replacements, it's a requirement of the city that we notify property owners of service lines containing lead. I mentioned that we're starting our, our street projects coming up soon. We'll actually be going out and meeting with property owners that we know that we have lead service line on our side. The likelihood is that they're going to have it on their side, so we'll be out there meeting with them to make sure that we can identify them, get them ready so they can get out and hire a plumber, once we replace our side, that they can have theirs done at the same time. There's a cost savings to them because we already have the street torn up. And then the financial assistance for customers on lead service line replacement. Currently, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, we do have a program that we've had in place since 2017. We provide a $2,000 reimbursement for a lead service line replacement. We also have, in our program, we've worked this with the DNR, is that we have the ability for anybody that's experiencing low income, that the city can actually pay for that service line to be repaired or replaced from a contractor and then the city gets reimbursed for that money. So what are the, some of the scenarios that we're looking at? I talked about a few of these, but reconstruction of the project, that's when the city's coming through and we're replacing the water main and the water service on our side. At that time, it's very important that we replace that customer side of that service line because if we didn't, again, studies have shown the levels are going to be high and we can't prevent that. But once we replace all of it at one time, we remove all the lead and there's no exposure to the property owner. If there's a lead service leak on the city side, this is another scenario that's addressed in the ordinance. During that time, we have a, we have a water service contract, we've had it for several decades now, that if a water service would break on our side, we have a contractor who would come out and repair it, typically repair it, but when we've had a lead service line, we've always replaced it completely. We don't do a spot repair on those. We've been very successful in my 24 years that I've been almost 24 years with the city. I can't think of one of the property owners that have not replaced their entire service when we replaced our lead service line during those years. And this was before Flint, Michigan. Since Flint, Michigan, last year, we had 100% compliance with changing out, even during reconstruction projects. There's a lead service leak on the customer side, that's something that is a requirement of us. If there's a, if they have to replace their side, even though our side hasn't been replaced at that time, we have to replace our side at the same time. Because again, if we don't, you're going to see those high levels. So there's a commitment not only on the customer side, but there's a commitment on our side. And that commitment is that we're dedicated to get the lead out of our system. And then the replacement of a lead service line that is eligible, that's in an event that before 2017, when we started going after the lead service lines very aggressively, we've replaced some old water mains that property owners may not have replaced theirs at that time. And I'm talking, could be 10, 15 years ago, that may have contained lead service lines. We are actively looking for those to try to replace those because those service lines right now are eligible to be replaced. Our side has already been replaced. Did they do anything wrong at the time? No. At the time, we didn't know any, well, we knew lead wasn't good for you and that's why we had a program to get rid of lead, but we didn't know the exact impact that it has now. So what do we have for lead service lines in the City of Eau Claire? We're estimating we have about 792 still on our city side. On the customer side, we have approximately 829. But the one thing we do know on the lead service line, they range in age from 85 to 135 years old. And we do have some 135-year-old lead service lines in the city. And we do have some 135-year-old lead service lines in the city of Eau Claire. And the thing is, it's not if they're going to break, it's when. And when they break, it's usually in the middle of January, and it's 30 below, and the ground's got six feet of frost in the ground. So it's, it's never an easy fix. But at that time, you know, that's the last time you want to have to come out and have to replace. If you haven't sat on a water main break or service leak at 30 below, well, I, I'll invite you out there sometime. Here's a map of what we have currently. And this shows basically, and it's hard to see this, but some of these areas you can see here that are, don't, they're not filled in, but they have a color. These are areas that were actually done through a, one of our street and utility reconstruction projects. And looking at some of the blue area, that was services that were replaced in 2017. So this was part of a street project, and we replaced those. Those had lead service lines at one time. Now they don't. We've replaced all those. Same thing with the red and the color. The ones that are, are darkly shaded are ones that are, areas that we have lead service lines still in our system. Some of these areas, you can, I'll point out one area. This area is on the corner of water and First Avenue. This is the parking lot at the University Finer Arts parking lot over there. So there's nothing in there, but we still have a water main that serves that, and they were stuffed out there at one time when there was actually homes there. So this will all be cleaned up once we replace that, and there won't be any water services in there. So what do we, I've talked about our lead service line program. This was approved in 2017 in response of some safe drinking water fund loan money that we got. Our steps for replacement require verification, replacement, application by the, by the property owner, and then reimbursement by the DNR to the city, and then we cut the property owners a check for, for their costs up to $2,000. We've got a qualified plumber's list that has a, has a list of plumbers in this area that do service replacements. We always encourage the property owners to get at least three quotes. Again, this is on private property, so we don't go out and get those quotes from. And then we also have some frequently asked questions on our website. This includes some, some assistance from the Eau Claire City County Health Department. And then, again, I talked about the city reimburses up to $2,000 per eligible lead service line. So what's the history of our safe drinking water grant funding? We received $500,000 in grant funding in 2017, $300,000 in 2018. The number of lead service lines replaced since 2017 is 193 lead service lines we have replaced. The average cost to replace a lead service line has been about $2,400. We've reimbursed just about $380,000 to date for the lead service lines in, in the city. We've submitted our intent to apply for a $4,000, $400,000 grant funding in 2020. And again, this is a competitive grant. We're competing with other communities, and, and an ordinance goes a long ways with that. We've been in the program now for two successful years. We're showing progress, and that's also very, very advanta, advantageous for us for grant funding. If the grant funding is not available in the future, we would submit in our future CIPs to continue this program to replace and, and get rid of all the lead service lines in the city. The Board of Health did review and, and looked at the ordinance, and they recommended approval of the ordinance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Pippinger, thank you for all of your work on this issue for a number of years. It's good to see the progress we've already been making in this city. Just a quick question about the amount that we reimburse. I understand it's around 2,000 right now, but the average is about 2,400 for a removal. Could we, and I believe we already did increase the overall amount. Could we go up a little higher, for example, to 2,400 or the full cost of removal? Would that be within our purview?
Yes, we can put it at any number. We could, the, the issue there is that you will then have less money. It will go less to cover all the services we have. With, with the exception of just a few, few folks, most of them have not had any problems with the $2,000 reimbursement. And ones that we have had some challenges are, the contractor that has been working with us has actually lowered the price in some cases to just $2,000, so it covers the entire cost.
Thanks. May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So I was looking at the map here. Actually, I have a few other que, I'll wait till other members have asked, but I was looking at the map that you put up, and I noticed on here that a few of the streets we have done in the past 10 years, but there's still people that have lead. Does that mean that they decided not to replace their lines at the time that we redid the
If we, yes, if, if we have, no, this, let me clarify on this map. This is a map that, from our GI system, that shows where we have it on our side of the street. The likelihood if we have it on our side, the property owner has it on their side. There, there would be, in the instance that you're talking about, there, there could and there likely are some services that did not get replaced when we replaced our side. And those are the ones that we're looking for right now because they're eligible. And we want to replace them now if we can.
Thank you.
I'm not saying now in January, when it's nice.
Other questions? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. I'm still feeling a little dim on Councilmember Worthman's question. So I see the properties that are outlined in a different color based on when they were, the city service was replaced. And based on what you just responded, that says they may have led service to the home, not in the dark ones, but in the ones that are just outlined.
Yes, these here, in 2019, we had 100% compliance, and they all replaced.
Okay.
In the past years, I checked on, did we get 100%, 100% compliance on those replacements on, when we replaced ours? The answer that I received was yes.
Okay. So I can look at that map and see that in, in my service area that they have, the city side has been replaced, and we can assume that 100% of those affected private properties are also been replaced?
That, correct. And that's what I, you know, that's what we know. I mean, could, could someone not have, perhaps in the 2016 years? But since we've had the grant funding, we've had significantly good compliance.
Thank you.
In replacement.
May I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
So again, I'm going to amplify one of Councilmember Worthman's questions. When, when a person is making an application from an income hardship, I mean, where it's, how does, you talked about accommodating that person, but how does that happen? How, how do they signal a hardship?
Sure. Well, that's a good question because initially, how, how this would happen is through typically our utility division. We, we go out and actually meet with property owners when we know there's a new construction going on. And I, I don't have that laid out here, but hypothetically make a, you know, this street is being reconstructed. Our utility division will make contact with the property owners by phone call, going out door to door, and letting them know. Along, along with our engineering department, they will send them a letter. And within the letter, we notify them that there is a possibility that they have a lead service line because we're confident here that we know we have lead on our side. So we will communicate that out to the property owner and then work with them through this time of year, before we even get a shovel in the ground, that we will work with them so they can get their, you know, set up with a plumber, get some quotes. They, they can do that this time of year and then be ready to go once we start the street project.
So what I'm understanding is that that conversation continues, and they, there's some backing and forthing about additional support and, and that type of thing?
Correct. And if, if there is that hardship, as I mentioned earlier, the city, part of our program, we will work with the property owners to make sure. If they can't afford to pay that contractor, the city will pay that contractor. We want to make sure that the, the service line gets replaced. That's paramount in our, in our mind.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. And to kind of go off of that, what you just said, just so I'm clear, does the city, if there is hardship identified, does the city pay up to 100% of the lead service line? Or what sort of benefit do, can people expect if they're experiencing hardship?
Yes, that would be our program, that we would pay 100% of that service replacement. Currently, as I said before, we've had the contractor that actually has worked with property owners, and they have paid, you know, they haven't paid for it, but they just lowered their, their price to replace it to, so that they would be able to be eligible for 100% replacement.
Okay. Could I have another question? So I think that there's, I, I guess I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the timeline for funding. We, I think it's needed, that we need to replace our lead service lines. But as we, like, require people to, to replace these, as we're, we're replacing our side of the lead service lines, I think we need to be mindful to make sure that there's funding available for people. And it sounds like there's, we have plenty, we have plenty of money for now. And so I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the next steps after, you know, a little bit farther out? If we're going to be relying upon grant funding, or if there's any plans for funding through our, our water utility or through the general budget at all?
Sure. And that's a good question because this isn't going to get done in a year. We're, we're talking that this is going to be, you know, 10, 15 years. And that's being aggressive, okay? That's being very aggressive, trying to get this all replaced within that time. Because we're talking millions of dollars worth of street projects and replacing water mains. In regards to the funding, right now, we're not looking at going through the utility or through PSC to get approval through the Public Service Commission to get our funding. One is because there were quite a few limitations on, on that funding. Only 50% of the funding could be granted through, through a grant. The other 50% had to be through a loan. So if you take the average of a $2,400 replacement, 1,200 could be forgiven, the other 1,200 couldn't be forgiven, and the city couldn't do anything about it. So it really limited us. What we're proposing is that we would submit through future CIPs, likely through the general fund, to have a lead service line replacement item within the CIP. And we would have to, at that time, you know, we can look at what our average cost is per year because we have a pretty good idea what we're spending average for replacement of lead service signs. And we can look back and determine that if we need $400,000 per year for, you know, five years, well, that's what we will, we'll budget for.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Burge.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. I have a couple health-related questions.
Sure.
It's my understanding, just may, may the more clarifying, but it's my understanding that paint is a big risk for lead poisoning too? And I was wondering, like, that's even more of a risk than lead poisoning, or in the pipes? Do you, is that what you would say, or?
Well, again, I, I, I know this answer. I know the health department director's here, but I, I think the likelihood is that paint exposure is probably more prevalent because, as I mentioned earlier, we treat our water, and we don't have the problem as far as lead leaching into the drinking water. However, the ordinance really addresses, you know, lead isn't a good place for, to be in any water system. And whether we're treating for it or not, it's better to get it out. I mean, we're talking pipes that are 85 to 135 years old. So to me, it, it makes sense to get it out. I'm not discounting lead, lead and paint. I mean, that, you know, certainly is, is a problem, and the exposure there is, is real. But again, I, you know, this ordinance addresses the lead water, you know, the lead service lines.
Yeah. Yes. I think, yeah, yes, I agree. I think this is a great ordinance. And then, and we can do what we can with the pipes. And then another kind of clarifying health question is, it's my understanding that the biggest risk actually for lead pipes is the, the partial replacement, and that's where the most danger is. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. As I, as I mentioned earlier, that's the important part of not replacing this side before we have this side replaced. And we don't replace the city side if we don't have that commitment to replace the customer side. Because that's where the exposure comes from, especially in, in this replacement scenario. If, if we have a break on this side and they're replacing this side, we're committed to replace our side and vice versa. These should be replaced simultaneously, same time. Same time, one is being replaced, the other should be replaced.
Because otherwise, it's very dangerous, it sounds, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President. Well, thank you, Mr. Pippinger. The, I guess the, the time period that we are giving people to replace the, the lead service lines from, from the time of notification, or is, is that 90 days? Is that my understanding from the ordinance?
It's a time period in which, as, as I mentioned, we're, we're going to be notifying people of, of reconstruction projects, street projects that are going on. We typically, when we start the work on a water main, we don't replace that service line right away. We typically will, well, we, we put the water main, the new water main in the ground because we have to make sure we get safe drink, you know, safe water out of it before we tie in any services. So the time period it gives us for the property owner to get, get the paperwork in order, hire the plumber that will make the transition to the new service line, that's enough time. We put it on there so make, the time period itself, the 90 days, was, was there to make sure that during that construction period, it was done so this is done simultaneously. We, we don't want someone to hook up an old lead service line to a brand-new service line that we stubbed into their property. We don't want that to happen because the same problem is going to happen to the property owner. They're going to have a lead exposure from, from the disturbance on their side of the, of the service line. So the 90 days gives ample time for the property owner to make sure that they can get everything in order before the service line is ready to be stubbed and attached to their, to their new service line.
Okay. I guess I have a follow-up to that. I mean, I, I got a phone call from a resident in the third ward that had a, a lead service line replaced, and it took four months to get a, to schedule a contractor to come, and then the contractor did not come, so that it took even longer. So I guess, I'm not sure how many examples of it not being able to line up from the contractor's side, and I believe it was an approved, you know, qualified plumber. So have we been seeing other issues like that where it's been taking, you know, longer than three months for a contractor to be lined up?
I haven't heard of that. I know we have one contractor is especially popular because his prices are lower. So I know he's got a backlog of customers, but I haven't heard of anybody not being addressed if they've signed up. I can follow up with that. I mean, if there, there's an issue, I can follow up with it.
Councilmember Worth. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Um, I noticed on your, your map, um, if you could put that back, um, I noticed that there's the, the areas of lead service line, there's, um, it, there's a blocking out over top of the area around Mayo Clinic and also Lake Shore Elementary School. I'm wondering if, um, first, if, if there have been any conversations with those institutions to talk about their needs and if the city, um, prioritizes the lead, like the reconstruction, um, based around institutions like this or anything else, really?
Good question. I was expecting that question to come up. Um, Lake Shore School, they, they tied in new services when they built the school, so they're not tied into a lead service line. So what they did is they basically came out into the street and they made another connection on the main and ran copper into the building rather than lead. So they're not tied in with the lead. Same thing with Mayo. I went back and checked this. All of their service lines have, when they did the, now, on the older part of the hospital, um, again, I'm not sure about that, but on any of the new parts of the hospital, they made connections with new water service lines and connections. So they're not connected with the lead service line.
So the, the private service line and also the public service line are both not lead? Okay. So then in, in terms of just prioritization of reconstruction, is it just along with the, the re, road reconstruction schedule or is there any prioritization of, um, road reconstruction around areas where there's high amounts of lead?
Another very good question. Um, so we look at different factors when we reconstruct a street. We look at the PCI of the street, the paving, the pavement condition index. So that's typically the one thing that actually makes a, uh, street project go. When, when the pavement starts to fail on us, we're replacing that. When we have utilities, it's in, this is in our comp plan. Whenever we have utilities that are older than seventy years old, we automatically replace those. We have been looking at these areas more specifically over the last few years. Been working with our engineering department to identify these areas and we're trying to replace these areas that have perhaps a marginal PCI, but also we know that the utilities have lead service lines. So we've been working together to make sure that we replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Worth?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Mr. Pipinger, just to clarify from my question before and Councilmember Christopherson, is that before this program was set up, two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, that we didn't have a hundred percent compliance when we were redoing streets across the city. Sometimes people would get them replaced when the, the street was torn up, but sometimes they didn't.
Yep.
So in those cases, those would be eligible for this funding.
That's correct. Yes.
And, and under the ordinance, they could get a notification potentially from the city saying, you are eligible? Or how would they fi- figure out if they're eligible?
Yes. And we, if we've been doing that for the last three years, we've been going out trying to find, along with our, and we're, we're fortunate that we change our water meters every ten years. So we've been in a lot of these properties within, and you can see the older areas of the city. I mean, this is where the initial city was started and this is basically the older areas that we find our system. We've actually been in areas that we've, uh, replaced our services in, in two thousand and sixteen. And we've, we've been back to property owners to check and see if they've had, uh, if they still have lead service lines. When we do, we work with them to get them into the program because now their service is eligible for replacement.
So if, that's helpful, helpful. And if we pass this ordinance tomorrow, then they essentially have thirty days or they will be notified again and then they'll have thirty days. Um, how will that work?
No, that, that, that's not the case. We're, we're not going to go out there and tell someone, you got thirty days to replace that service line. This is a situation, when we talk about that thirty days,
Is when it's being redone?
Is when we're replacing ours at the same time. We need them to comply with that. If, it's a service line that has been, that we've replaced ours some years ago and we come upon them, we're going to get them, try to get them into the program and encourage them. We've been very successful at this for many, many years. And we're going to encourage them to replace that service line. Again, that service line is between eighty-five and a hundred and thirty-five years old. It's not if, it's when.
Okay. So the thirty days only applies to the streets that are, uh, getting redone, but there are eligible lead lines for whom the thirty days won't apply to, eligible from the past. Just so I understand this, if you got your, if Emory was redone in two thousand and ten and we did ours, but you didn't do yours, you would be eligible, but you're not under the thirty-day requirement? Does that make sense?
Yep. Let me give you an example. Because this happens more than people will know. There could be a, a slow leak on this lead service line. And someone will call us and say, you know, I've got a wet spot in my yard here and what's going on. We come in there, we discover they have a service leak. Part of our utility ordinance, the way it is, we, we have the ability to say, you have to replace that service line, whether it's lead, copper, or otherwise. Because it's, it's, you know, we're wasting water with that service leaking like that. So we have the ability to do that. The other thing is if, if it's a lead service line, um, we, we want that replaced anyways. One, we don't want to waste the water, but we also know if that is broken, the likelihood is that the elevated lead, lead levels are present in that home at that time. So, an answer to your question.
Yeah, eligible pipes from pre, pre-program eligible pipes, how will they be handled?
Well, they'll be handled, I mean, again, I don't foresee us out there hunting down people that have lead service line that are eligible. I mean, we want to get them in the program. Our goal should be to replace all lead service lines in the city of Eau Claire. Um, but we're, we're not going to be out there looking for lead service lines that haven't been replaced that are eligible. If we find them, we're going to try to get the people in the program.
That's helpful. Could I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Um, the hardship, uh, exception, can we write that into the ordinance so that it's clear, um, that that's available for people who have hardship?
It's, it's part of our program that we have, uh, that we have with our lead service line program. Can it be written into the ordinance? I, I suppose it could.
Or a reference to hardship? Because right now, as it is, it doesn't, as, as I looked over, it doesn't reference hardship, eligibility.
No, it, what it, it does, what it does read is that there is a, in the financial part, it says that, uh, uh, funds shall be paid directly to the plumbing contractor on behalf of the property owner. That's where, uh, uh, the city may provide financial assistance for customer-side service line replacements from the form of grants, loans, and other funding. And that, that sentence that says funds shall be paid directly to the plumbing contractor on behalf of the property owner, um, that was in relation to, uh, uh, folks having, uh, financial.
Oh, sure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Pipinger. This is such an informative conversation. Uh, my, my last question is I, I just want to reiterate because this, this was, uh, a new awareness for me that this ordinance does not exactly change our practice, but it makes a city eligible for more grant money in the future. It increases our eligibility for, to provide financial assistance. So more so than being punitive or clarifying it, it, it provides a, a deeper service to our constituents.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah. Thank you, President. Well, um, Mr. Pipinger, the, the topic of costs and, you know, it sounds like the property owner has to pay everything upfront to the contractor. So there's obviously, there may be folks that don't have two or three thousand dollars laying around. So what, what are the, uh, I guess the financing options or, or their options in general for that, that time period before they would get reimbursed by the up to two thousand dollars or potentially more?
Yes. And, and we've had discussions with the DNR on that exact, uh, that exact issue. And in, in either case, it doesn't matter if the property owner's experiencing any type of, uh, financial difficulties. We can, as a city, actually, uh, pay the contractor and submit to the DNR for reimbursement. We've talked about doing something like that and perhaps in the future. Right now, our program is set up to where the, because we're, again, we're talking about private property and we have to respect that part of the property. We don't own that property. It's owned by private citizens. And it's up to them to hire the, the plumbing contractor. Right now, we have it to where they would re, they would pay the plumbing contractor. We submit a, uh, request for dispersment from the DNR. They send it to us and then we, we cut the check for the, uh, to the property owners. That takes about thirty days to make sure that, once they have submitted, paid, and they've got their paperwork into us, it takes about thirty days.
The, the grants themselves, is all buildings, all structures, a commercial building, a multi-family apartment building, they all are eligible for the two thousand dollar grant?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not just single family and, okay. And then what, um, what's the timeline on awarding the, the two thousand and twenty grant? Is that coming up shortly or?
I, I should be hearing sometime this spring.
Okay.
And like I said, it's competitive, so we will be filling out, uh, uh, paperwork for that. And one thing that's going for us right now, we've been in the program for two, the two years that they have offered, uh, safe drinking water loan funding for this. Um, but the other, because we know that there's more and more communities that are starting to see that, it's a good thing to get the lead out of the system. Um, it's becoming more competitive.
Okay.
And this will help us.
Great. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Worthman?
I don't have a question. I just want to follow up with a thanks to Mr. Pipinger. Um, this has been a very important issue for our community and, um, you know, his work. And I think also people in our community having a greater awareness of lead have helped to push this forward. And I just want to say thank you for continuing this next step. This is a big deal for our community and our health. So I think it's, um, yeah, just commendable for, for all that you've put into it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council, or City Attorney Nick?
If I could, I just wanted to add one more piece of information. Uh, Mr. Pipinger, you know, kind of touched on the PSC program and indicated that, um, we're utilizing, uh, a DNR grant program and then backed by a city CIP program. But just, just so you're aware, if at any point in the future that PSC program, uh, you know, maybe changes its rules and allows more than fifty percent reimbursement and a, a future city council might want to utilize it, current state law requires that prior to utilization, you have to have an ordinance in place that requires customer-side lead service line replacement throughout. Uh, so really one of the things we're doing here is enhancing our chances probably to receive another round of grant approval, but also set the city up should we want to utilize a PSC-funded, uh, method in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nick?
I don't see any. Thank you very much. This is a public discussion, so if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item, you're welcome to come up. Can I ask, is anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending chapter ten point two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Parking Meters and Lots as it relates to the L.E. Phillips Memorial Public Library parking lot. Mr. Solberg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The public discussion tonight, uh, is related to the, uh, lower level, level parking that is currently at the L.E. Phillips Public Memorial, Memorial Public Library. Um, for a number of years, uh, there are twenty spaces in the lower level, um, of parking that you see along the north and east sides of the building and the driveway comes out on the Dewey Street. Um, that has been treated like a, um, standard city parking lot, um, as well as like the Riverview Lot, the Railroad Lot across the river, the, the parking ramps, in such that it has had, um, parking meters in it and it has been governed as a citywide parking lot instead of a, um, facility parking lot. So working with, uh, the, uh, library, uh, the library director and the, and the, the library board, um, through the library director, um, the proposed ordinance removes the parking meters from the, um, parking lot in the lower level of the library and make, creates it into a, um, a facility parking lot, similar to what we have at Hobbs, at City Hall. Typically, what is associated with a city building, um, as opposed to a standalone parking lot, uh, this will offer a lot of, uh, flexibility for the library to meet the needs of their patrons. Um, it will allow them to, to tailor the parking services offered in that area, um, to have a mixture of either accessible, uh, parking, um, some express parking, um, possibly, um, whatever other type of parking they would like. Um, whereas when we have our, our city lots, that we typically, for enforcement and public expectation, try to have a little bit more consistent and we're not able to, to have the flexibility like we have with a facility lot. So, um, with the benefits to the library and the patrons and, uh, the users, uh, of this, uh, facility, um, we're proposing this, uh, parking ordinance change. It has been presented to the library board and they are supportive of the changes, uh, to the, um, for the removal of the parking meters in the lower level of the, the library and, um, feel it would be, uh, best, um, for downtown. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Solberg. This is, um, I happened to notice this evening that the street, uh, parking meters are also bagged right now. Does that relate in any way to this change?
Um, that does not relate to this. Uh, they're currently bagged because it's a holdover from the parking ramp repairs. When, um, we're doing the repairs and it was closed, we wanted to offer as much parking for that.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Can I ask, if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is a public discussion on a resolution vacating a portion of Losan Avenue from U.S. Highway twelve to the northern right-of-way of Alpine Road. Again, Mr. Solberg?
Thank you again. Um, this is a partial street vacation. Um, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward vacation request, but it has had a, um, not as straightforward a process going forward. So I'll just summarize, uh, how the request came to be and then have room for questions afterwards. Um, the owner of the property here, uh, desired to build a, a building in this location. And the existing right-of-way is this black line to this black line. And it ranges about two hundred feet wide currently at the widest and then it next down to about a hundred and eighty feet. Alpine Road is city right-of-way and it is a city jurisdictional street. Losan Avenue, from where this right-of-way line extends over to the north crossing, is in the town of Union. To help with the infill within the city boundaries, uh, there is a request to partially vacate from the black line to the white line to help with setbacks, um, for a structure that's going up. Uh, that recently also happened on Star Avenue, Star and Melby, uh, up by the airport, um, where it didn't really change anything with the street. It just, it adjusted the boundary so we, um, so it would help with setbacks and help with infill in the city. Um, this portion of land is in the, was in the town of Union. Um, and annexation recently, um, occurred that annexed the right-of-way in this section up to where it's the city's jurisdiction. And it annexed from the town of Union into the city of Eau Claire. So So this portion of right-of-way currently is city of Eau Claire right-of-way, city of Eau Claire boundary here, and then town of Union right-of-way for the street. Now, the vacation request is to vacate the right-of-way along here to reduce, I guess to increase the setback distance, and it reduces the effective width of the right-of-way down to about 160 feet at the narrowest, and it ends up being about 180 feet at the widest. We will retain utility easements over that area. We don't currently have utilities in there, but we will retain those. The street vacation or the partial vacation doesn't affect the use of Losan, and if it's constructed in the future to a city standard, we're still able to have curb and gutter and sidewalks and boulevards, a possible trail connection through here. So a typical right-of-way width is either 66 or 80 feet, and we're in excess of 160. So for those reasons and to help facilitate infill within the city boundaries, staff is supportive of the partial street vacation after a lengthy process to get here. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Brenner with Menards, 5101 Menard Drive. Everything was mentioned is accurate. I do want to mention the portion that was in the town of Union. The town in Union did vacate that to Menards. So that portion that was annexed last month is already owned in, by Menards. So it'd just be this piece here to, I guess, finish the puzzle, and when we come and develop this piece, we will do a CSM and combine essentially these three parcels into one for future development. And when we built the self-storage units out there, we did stub utilities to this lot, so it is getting to the point where we can develop it. So with that, I'll ask, answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thanks for coming up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Can I ask, does anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public discussions and walk on the public comment period. Ms. Meroll would check to see if there's any people that have signed up. Let me just briefly go through the protocol. Again, if there's anyone else that wishes to sign up, please let Ms. Meroll know. When you do come up, please state your name and city of Eau Claire address. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda. As council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. You have three minutes to speak, and again, the same light system will be in use. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute, and then when the red light comes on, again, I'll ask you to wrap it up. Comment period will last for 20 minutes unless it's the wish of two-thirds of the council to extend it. So I will first invite up Kathy Campbell.
Good evening. Shall I lower this?
Sure. Help yourself.
All right. Kathy Campbell, I live in the town of Seymour, 7655 Burnell Drive. Thank you for letting me speak. I live a half mile from the landfill, currently operated by Advanced Disposal. The siting committee for the proposed landfill expansion is requesting nearly a million-dollar increase for the city, county, and town of Seymour from Advanced, but next to nothing to improve our conditions, protect, or compensate the Seven Mile Creek neighborhood. The city itself stands to get 94 cents on every ton of garbage collected. The municipalities gain while the quality of our lives suffer and property values decline with every ton of waste. Everything is on the table for negotiating increases for municipalities, and everything should be on the table for the people in harm's way. The Seven Mile Creek neighborhood is in favor of the municipalities receiving this large increase, but to continue to overlook the impact on us is confusing and concerning. Since the landfill was purchased from the county in '96, it has expanded three times and increasingly impacts us. Our neighborhood experiences more unpleasant odors, noise, constant litter, dirt in the air on our homes, runoff impairing Seven Mile Creek, heavy traffic, unsightly view, I could go on. And with another huge horizontal and vertical expansion, we insist that the siting committee address these problems now. It is a fact that living within one mile of a landfill diminishes our quality of life and property values. 20 years ago, siting committees in 12 Wisconsin cities and towns in five counties used their statutory authority and placed local controls on the landfill to improve conditions, compensate, and protect property values of residents within one mile, and our siting committee has not. Town chairman from those other communities told me, "The people need this. The committee just needs to ask for it." The current proposal will not protect our neighborhood and actually helps advance further devalue and blight our area. We want the siting committee to negotiate in the best interests of all the people, especially those most vulnerable. The proposal and final agreement needs to include terms more favorable to the Seven Mile Creek neighborhood, not Advanced. Advanced disposal does not need their protection. We do. We can no longer afford the high cost of the siting committee dismissing this growing problem. You are our neighbors. Please be good neighbors. Ask the four city representatives on the siting committee if they would accept the proposed terms for their families or their neighborhood. Tell them to act fairly. Do what is right and just for the people of the Seven Mile Creek neighborhood. Enclosed in your packet was a signed statement from some of the Seven Mile Creek neighbors for your review. Call me if you have any questions, and please attend the public meeting going to be held on February 6th at 6 o'clock at the town of Seymour Hall.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. Pam Novak?
Good evening. Hi. My name is Pam Novak. I live at 8617 Burnell Drive. We've been there almost five years, and the garbage has increased along Q and Burnell. And the smell is terrible. The noise, you can't even sit outside in your yard in the summertime and enjoy your country quietness because it doesn't exist. And property values, we're real scared. When you want to sell your home, you can't wait a year with the plan apparently that's in place now. You usually are moving because you got a job change or something in your family has changed health-wise or something. When you put your house up for sale, I think all of yous know you need to sell it as soon as possible, not a year later. It's just, and the traffic, the traffic is really, really heavy, and those trucks do not obey the speed limit at all. So I guess that's all.
Thank you for coming up. Ms. Rayel? Rayel? Is it? Pronounce it Rayel? Sorry. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Debbie Rayel. I live at 8999 Olson Drive in the town of Seymour. I purchased my property in 1995. I consider myself a steward of the land and the area. It's my understanding that advanced proposal or advanced disposal, in the current proposal, doesn't have any obligation to test Seven Mile Creek for water quality or our homes. This is very confusing to me. I don't understand. Second, my second point is, it's also my understanding that they have the right of first refusal if I put my property in my home for sale. Had I known that, would I have built at a place where I know that a dump is going to be the first option to buy my land? Why would I invest in a dump, a potentially future dump? It's crazy. I have a new neighbor who just purchased property. He's young. He has a toddler. He told me he wants to build in two years. My advice to him would be, "You better wait. You better wait." And I don't understand why aren't, we aren't represented by our siting committee. This is confusing to me as well. We haven't been allowed to have a representative speak for us or present our concerns. It just seems like it's all kind of like under the table, and thank you to Kathy Campbell for bringing this to light. She went door-to-door informing us of the situation. I had no idea. I split, put a lot of sweat and tears into my property in building my home. We are raising our family there. My vision, when I need to leave because I'm on 25 acres and won't be able to maintain it for the rest of my life, is it someone who's interested in horseback riding or cross-country skiing or hunting are the people who purchased my property that I have been so dedicated to for the past almost 24, five years? Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Ms. Jansen?
Good evening. Good evening. Jessica Jansen, I live at 5591 Burnell Drive. I do not live within the one-mile radius of the landfill, but we own 60 acres that is within the, actually within the half-mile of the landfill. We, you know, we're also raising our family there. We have, we have four children, and so it does, it does matter to me, and the concerns, I guess, that I have are that it does not seem like it's been fair representation. I might have the numbers a little bit wrong, but my understanding is there are 13 members on the siting committee. There are a certain number from the city, a certain number from the county, and there are four that represent the township of Seymour, including the town supervisor. So that leaves three people that represent the neighborhood, but none of them live within the neighborhood, within that mile radius. And so it doesn't seem like fair representation. Actually, one person on the committee is one of my close neighbors, and I know him well, and I spoke with him, and he said, you know, there were things that were brought up for vote, and it was voted down because there isn't enough people on the committee to really represent what the, what the people, the residents, are looking for. And so that's, I guess, where my concern is, is that it doesn't seem like it's, it's fair representation. Like Kathy stated, there's, there's ways that, you know, things could be brought to the table, and there could be more done. I certainly wouldn't appreciate having, you know, my duck covered with seagull poop every day, and there's just a lot of things that happen out there that I think anybody here would go, you know, that's, it's not really where you want to be. So I just kind of wanted to voice my concern on that because as those things came up, I thought, you know, that just doesn't seem right. So that's all.
Thank you. And just to explain for those of you that have not sat through the public commentary period, we're not allowed to ask questions or, or make comment on anything that's stated because it's not been publicly noticed. So it's not that we're not hearing you or listening, but understand that we just can't respond, so. So with that, is, was there anyone else that wished to speak during the public commentary period? No? All right. Well, I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Appreciate you being here and welcome you to join us tomorrow at 4 o'clock for our legislative We will be going into closed session, which will mean we'll need to have everyone leave the room here shortly when you get, get yourselves ready. Upon a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, the city council may go into closed session. Is there any discussion from council in regards to this closed session? Seeing none, city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
We will now go into closed session.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Adam, city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here. Thank you and welcome to all of you that are joining us here in chambers this afternoon and to staff and to fellow council members, also those that are joining us at home. We appreciate that you're watching us there as well. This is our legislative session for the Eau Claire City Council, and during its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items here before us. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting. Thank you to the residents that joined us last night for your comments and thoughts during our public hearings and also to those that reached out to us today. Thank you to Valley Media Works for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. We have a full agenda, so we will get started. First item of business is the consent agenda. Again, a note to anyone that is on the consent agenda, that there'll just be one vote for all the items listed there. If it does pass, then know that your item has been passed with it. So do council members have any questions regarding the consent agenda, or does council wish to remove any item for separate consideration? Seeing?
Councilmember Worthman? If I just wanted to ask a question on this item number 10. It's regarding the authorization for applying for a grant.
Okay.
Could you speak a little bit more? I didn't, I don't think I, maybe I missed it, but what size grant are we talking about and what do we expect to come?
Right.
From this?
Yeah, we're hoping to apply for this Eau Claire Community Foundation grant to secure some funds, modest funds. I think at maximum, applying for $10,000 to help implement an educational campaign to implement the Renewable Energy Action Plan, which is pending. Should be coming before you about March for your approval. But the timing of this grant, the deadline is, I believe, January 21st, and so we need your authorization to apply to be able to secure some funds, probably later more in June, that they would make the determination, and then a campaign could be created with some more resources for things like you see here, like graphic arts. Also, the Sustainable Advisory, Sustainability Advisory Committee is looking at this resource here to help the community implement some of the actions, which is kind of this idea of the biggest carbon loser lose 5,000 pounds of CO2 over 60 days. And so this is a resource that we potentially could secure with the funding of the grant.
Okay.
So this is one of the ideas.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions, items on the consent? Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, the consent agenda is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
And the consent agenda passes. We have one proclamation this afternoon, recognizing Martin Luther King Day. If I could have Professor Duxworth-Lotton meet me at the podium. I don't know if Mr. Middleton here too? If I could have Professor Duxworth Lawton meet me at the podium, I don't know if Mr. Middleton here too? No? Okay. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So, on Monday, obviously is a big, very important day for, for our community, for our country, for the world, for that matter. So we want to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King and that day. So with this proclamation, whereas federal, state, and local governments, including the City of Eau Claire, annually observe the third Monday of January as a national holiday, celebrating the birth and life of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas, the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday is the only federal holiday that is seen as a day of service, a day on, not a day off, with the intention of encouraging all Americans to observe the day with action and education programs that will move us closer to Dr. King's visions of a beloved community. Eau Claire City Hall and related administrative offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th, so that city staff can mark the 25th anniversary of MLK Day by learning about community service opportunities, participating in diversity training, and in other in-service education programs. Commemorating Dr. King's life is not only a tribute to his dreams and his contributions to our nation and the world, but also a reminder that every day, each of us can play a part in continuing his work. As Dr. King once said, "Everyone can be great because everybody can serve." Now therefore, I, Terry Weld, President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of the entire city council and the residents of Eau Claire, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 20th, 2020, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Eau Claire, and encourage everyone to join in recognizing this day by seeking out and engaging in service programs in honor of Dr. King's life and his lasting legacy. Thank you very much.
On the behalf of uniting bridges and the university, my organizations, thank you for, and especially City Hall, for your continuing support, for the, not just the support in terms of the proclamation, but the behind-the-scenes work that we've been able to do. This is the 20th anniversary of the Martin Luther King Remembrance in the City of Eau Claire. This will be my 10th year as Director. And to celebrate, we are hoping to announce some innovative ways in which the King Program and the City of Eau Claire and the university will be able to bring equity to diversity and inclusion, both training and support, into the city in a public-private partnership that will hopefully lead the way for the rest of the state in a couple of ways. And we are grateful for this opportunity to help bridge the gap and stand in the gap, to help our more marginalized citizens move to the center, and to move Eau Claire towards being closer to King's beloved community. Because Eau Claire is King's beloved community, and we are the beloved community. So I thank you, and I hope to see you 6:00 PM at St. James de Greater Church. If you come at 5:30, my students, who took over the program this year, have an exercise they want you to do. So please come.
We will move on to the business agenda, beginning with Agenda Item Number 16. Josh has already beaten me to it. A resolution authorizing the renewal of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Youth Hockey Association for a five-year period. Mr. Solinger, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and councilmembers. The resolution before you authorizes the renewal of a memorandum of understanding with Eau Claire Youth Hockey. It is for a five-year term. It is, the purpose of it is to facilitate Wisconsin amateur hockey association programming at Hobbs Municipal Ice Center. This essentially mirrors the Eau Claire Figure Skating Club MOU that you saw at our, at our last meeting, so a lot of the terms in here are going to look very familiar, such as free ice time for tri-hockey and hockey day programming, reduced ice time fees for the recreation-level hockey programming, that's for ages four through eight. So the, I guess the intent there from sort of more of a policy perspective is to provide for free or reduced-cost ice time for programs that offer a new or alternative way for folks in the community to access ice-based recreation opportunities in the community. And there, it's part of the agreement, there is also free access to meeting room space at the ice center for the youth hockey group, up to 175 hours, so same, same as the figure skating club there. After 175 hours, they are charged at the city council-approved fee. My understanding is that we've never crossed that threshold with, with any of these agreements where this provision's in place. And the city is paid $5,000 on an annual basis for each year of this MOU by youth hockey to be used for minor facility improvements and the provision of equipment. So again, similar to that other MOU that you saw last time, the, the money that's paid to the city comes back into providing for the facilities and equipment necessary to provide for this, these recreation opportunities. Glad to take any questions for this one.
Any more questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you very much. On a motion by Councilmember Kristofferson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 17 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Center Ice Club for a five-year period. Good afternoon.
Hello again. So this resolution does authorize the renewal of the agreement with the Center Ice Club for, for a five-year term. It was last in place from 2014 through, through 2019, so this does renew it. The Center Ice Club, it provides for the Center Ice Club to operate an auxiliary concession stand where beer sales occur at certain college and adult hockey games, as well as certain special events. That is subject to mutual agreement by both parties. The games are provided for through the, through permission by the Community Services Director. The city council does retain the ability to approve on a case-by-case basis for those special events where beer sales will occur. So that's still subject to that regular special event review process. There are a number of provisions enumerated in this agreement to essentially assure for the safe and secure sale of beers at events where that occurs. For example, the Center Ice Club is required to provide a minimum of two licensed bartenders and staffing necessary to ensure that there's essentially adequate, safe and secure access to, to sales of beer there. Consumption of beer is confined to the club viewing room area and the mezzanine at O'Brien Rink. There, there is a requirement that Center Ice Club has a license to sell beer. They do maintain both a Class B and Class C license. In this case, the Class B is applicable to what is occurring in this agreement here. And there are some provisions related to scheduling to ensure that folks who are at the municipal ice center for non-beer events will have adequate time to exit the facility prior to the start of events where beer is sold. So they'll have, they'll have 30 minutes to leave if they so choose. There are also general provisions related to the city providing clean and orderly facilities for the beer sales to be conducted. The Center Ice Club is also then expected, under the agreement, to maintain a clean and orderly environment for the, the sales to occur. There are insurance requirements in this agreement as well that do include an additional liquor liability coverage that is in addition to the general liability coverage you often see in, in other agreements of this nature, and in some of the other agreements before you today. And under the agreement, the city has also paid $3,500 on an annual basis for each year of the, of the five years of the agreement. Similar to all of the other agreements where you see a payment like this, it's essentially going back to provide for those facility improvements and equipment that would be necessary to operate programming at the municipal ice center. I do believe Mr. Pat Rolbecki is here if you do have any questions related specifically to the, to the operations. Otherwise, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you very much. On a motion by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye. Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 18 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the 2020 Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 supplemental agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the City of Chippewa Falls.
Halfway there. So this resolution authorizes the, the City of Eau Claire to execute that supplemental agreement with the City of Chippewa Falls. So under the Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 Operating Assistance Program, they, they determine and set the boundaries for urbanized areas in which only one, there's only one designated recipient of this funding. In this case, Eau Claire is the designated recipient for the Eau Claire-Chippewa Falls urbanized area. By executing the supplemental agreement, what this is allowing to happen is that the City of Chippewa Falls will, will be able to receive funding under this program that will be used to, to finance a portion of the costs associated with their shared ride taxi service. By executing the supplemental agreement, and by the City of Chippewa Falls receiving funding under the program, the City of Eau Claire is, is not in any way, shape, or form subject to terms or provisions that would be applicable to the City of Chippewa Falls to receive their portion of funding. And for your consideration, the City of Chippewa Falls also approved a resolution to this effect prior to this item coming before you, so that is in your packet for your review and consideration. Glad to take any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 18, a resolution, I'm sorry, 19, a resolution authorizing the renewal of a shared services agreement with the Eau Claire Area School District to cooperatively provide recreation programming in the community.
So this, this resolution renews that agreement for another five-year term with Eau Claire Area School District to provide for fair, shared services and facilities for recreation programming in the community. This applies to things such as softball fields, ski trails, and gymnasiums. Certain things that are set forth or enumerated in this agreement include the priority of scheduling at facilities for each entity, the responsibility for maintaining facilities, so in this case, each entity is responsible for maintaining their own facilities that are being used for the recreation programming. It does also set forth a timeframe for an annual reconciliation of billable costs. So throughout the year, each entity is incurring billable costs to one another through the provision of these services and shared facilities. So what this, what this provides for is that in July of each year, the two entities will get together and reconcile those costs owed to one another, and does set forth insurance and indemnification requirements. Glad to take any questions on this one.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Worthman?
Does this have any bearing on our issue with presidential candidates showing up not paying their pressure?
No.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 20 is a resolution authorizing an addendum to the existing summer programming agreement with the Eau Claire Area School District.
All right. So last but not least, this resolution is an addendum to the existing summer programming agreement with the Eau Claire Area School District. So similar to the last one where it's providing for shared services and facilities for summer programming, this is modifying certain requirements within the agreement related to the contents and dates by which certain reports must be made by the city to the school district. Those reports would include things like program attendance records, the dates by which successful background checks occur for any personnel that would be interacting with participants of the programming, as well as any new program offerings for the subsequent summer recreation season. And then there is some restructuring of the, of the fees within the agreement. For example, there is a facility fee that's been in the agreement that's now removed. There is a material reimbursement fee that's being added. And there's also a per-student charge that's being increased from $37 to $40. This fee was last increased in 2017, and in looking back in the history of the fee that's charged through this agreement, it is being increased on roughly an every third-year basis. So this would be consistent with that model. Glad to take any questions on this one.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Kristofferson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. I have just curiosity about how the actual pickup for students during summer, who, who actually determines where they're picked up, how they're delivered, what that timeframe is?
That, that's a good question that I don't have the answer to right now. I'd be glad to, to look into that and get back to you. Absolutely.
Any other questions from council? Thank you for all your presentations and preparation.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Kristofferson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Eau Claire and Police Patrol Local Number Nine. Good afternoon, Ms. Seltin.
Good afternoon. Before you this afternoon is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal collective bargaining agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the Police Patrol Local Nine Union. On December 11th, 2019, a tentative agreement was reached between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Police Patrol Local Nine Union for a successor collective bargaining agreement. The terms of the successor agreement are reflected in a memorandum in your packet materials. It does provide for across-the-board wage increases for the next two years, 2020 and 2021, at both January 1st and July 1st of 1.25% increase, and then January of 2021 and July of 2021, another 1.25% wage increase. And that is the same wage increase that was rolled out for the fire bargain, and then also for the non-represented employees for, for 2020. It also cleaned up some language with respect to the dues deduction responsibility because of the Janus Supreme Court decision. It includes rolling in the three-year trial of the side letter, the new patrol schedule. It was a three-year trial, and now the terms of that side letter are being rolled into the collective bargaining agreement, and there was some minor tweaking of some of the payback hours provisions of that agreement that are now contained within it. And then it does call for a two-year duration to the agreement. A proposed ordinance has also been prepared and will be introduced this afternoon to amend the police pay plan to reflect the tentative agreement reached with respect to the wage increases for 2020 and 2021. Human Resources respectfully requests that council suspend the rules and take up the proposed pay plan ordinance this afternoon so that the respective wage increases can be implemented as soon as possible. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Seltin? Councilmember Kristofferson?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you for this presentation. I wonder, without taking a ton of time, I was able to witness the negotiations, and and I, as a new council member, was not aware of the payback hours. I wonder if you could just describe to the other new council members just exactly what that is?
Okay. So, previous, under the prior agreements, there was a different work shift arrangement. So, in the last three years, we've moved to a four-on, it's a four-on, four-off, four-on, four-off, and a 10.25-hour-per-day shift. So, with that change in shift, the patrol officers didn't work the requisite number of FLSA hours that they were paid for, you know, in the year. So, there was 91.25 hours of payback hours that have to be made up in order to get them to the hours that were under the prior agreement so that they would work the same amount of hours under the new schedule. So, with the payback hours, it allows the ability to have officers come in for trainings, any kind of trainings, and use their payback hours for that. And that's what the majority of the training, the payback hours, are used for. But then it also gives the chief some discretion to schedule officers to come in and work those payback hours to attend neighborhood meetings or to go to any other, you know, community-type events and that where, and also to staff, like when we have music festivals and Fourth of July celebrations or special events. So, it's just, it's a way to schedule those hours, those payback hours.
May I just respond? Thank you. It was information I thought was so creative and so flexible and really supports that in partnership that the police department is trying to achieve. Thank you.
Thanks for sitting in on the bargain.
Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Kristofferson and seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-two is a resolution vacating a portion of Los Angeles Avenue from U.S. Highway 12 to the northern right-of-way of Alpine Road. Does council have any questions or additional questions for Mr. Solberg? Seeing none? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-three is a resolution adopting the update of the Third Ward Neighborhood Plan. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Noel? Councilmember Gregert?
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, yeah, I guess I have a question for Mr. Noel about, just give him a moment. The, there's a reference to an area of the neighborhood that would be studied for downzoning. And I know that was already done in other parts of the neighborhood previously. I wonder if you could describe a bit what you expect to, like, how the city would go about studying that issue? And it's that gray area on there is my understanding. So, I wonder if you could give us a little more flavor on that and how that came up as a priority for the plan?
Yeah, good question. That, downzoning in that area was also part of the 2001 plan, actually looking at a larger area, more so the whole red, the area in the red boundary. They scaled that back to that transition area south of Washington. And this is to look at every property. Staff would have to look at every property to understand if there was a downzone from high-density residential, R4, R3, R2, down to say, R1, R2, a duplex, or a single-family. What are the nonconforming issues that it might create to the property owner? There's apartment buildings in that area, there's single-family homes. And so, we advised to carefully study the issue to make sure that we would not create any title, major title issues with property owners there. That if there's a downzoning that would occur, there would be a lot of nonconforming uses potentially, as well as nonconforming structures. And so, we would have to carefully study that before we would bring forth any recommendations to the plan commissioner or city council.
As a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Do you see it as unlikely that much would change in that area based on the fact that it's already been studied here?
There may be a couple properties that might be suitable for a downzoning. But during our initial review for the plan consideration, a lot of it, we would recommend to stay medium to high-density residential, which is actually consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming up. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President. Well, yeah, I just have a few comments following this through the process over the last few years. I just wanted to show some appreciation for our staff, particularly Mr. Noel, who's been working on it, and to the neighborhood leaders, both from the Steering Committee and the Neighborhood Association and others who weighed in. And certainly, you know, the university was kind of, you know, as a major stakeholder in the neighborhood, it was good to see the, some of the differences hashed out and ultimately, some good compromises made. I think it's a really good plan. I even got some of my own ideas in there about transit because I live in the neighborhood and see some of the gaps in service there. So, it was a, I think it's a really good example of taking the time when needed to make sure we have a solid plan for the future. And I think there's some plans and studies that we're going to see pretty soon, like the parking study that'll help shed some light on how we can use this plan in the future as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Councilmember Kristofferson?
Thank you, President. Well, thank you, Councilmember Gregert, for just mentioning the work and the creativity that follows that kind of citizen involvement. There is a neighborhood plan for West Riverside, and that neighborhood is reincarnated as the Upper West Side. And I think that Mount Washington, which is now, they've named themselves Shawtown, both as core neighborhoods to the city, are very invigorated by reading this plan and thinking like, that's the kind of planning and conversation that they would like to have. So, it's a great time to have this come to fruition and provide an example for what other neighborhoods can do to be participating at a deep level in their own development.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-four is a resolution approving the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee 2020 Annual Work Plan. Good afternoon, Mr. Ivory.
Good afternoon. The ordinance for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee requires city council approval of their annual work program. So, we did include a copy of the 2020 work program in your packet. Trevor Whitwer from the Engineering Department and myself provide the staff direction for the committee. We presented the work program to BPAC at their December meeting. We also included a copy of the 2019 work program for the committee in your packet to kind of show the status of some of the projects that the committee has been working on throughout 2019. 2019 turned out to be a fairly busy year for the committee. And here's just kind of a sampling of some of the projects that they were involved with in terms of how they submitted an application for the Bike Friendly Community, application through the League of American Bicyclists. And they were, the city was designated, again, as a bronze designee as a bicycle-friendly community. We assisted in walk audits for the State State Project and then also walk audits for the Safe Routes to Parks Plan. That Parks Plan will be coming before the council probably in March or so. We provided input to staff on the 2019 and 2020 CIP projects. And examples would be Forest Street, Lake Street, and State Street. The committee co-sponsored multiple Bike Week activities back in June. They also worked on finalizing the regional bike routes throughout the Chippewa Valley. This was kind of an exciting project because they worked with the City of Chippewa Falls, the Village of Lake Hallie, City of Altoona, Chippewa County, and then Eau Claire County in putting this regional bike route system together. And we anticipate that you'll be starting to see signs for these bike routes showing up now this spring. Also, the committee sponsored an educational booth at the Hutchison Technology Wellness Fair in November. And it went very well, and they want to do more of that as time moves on. They also provided assistance on some mapping projects. Examples of those were with the Chippewa Valley Bike Map that was printed originally back in 2015. It's been so popular that we ran out of all the copies that were printed back at that time. So, we were able to print a small number of those late this fall. And hopefully, that'll tide us over until the newer version of this bike map is prepared. We also worked with the Wisconsin DNR. And Wisconsin DNR had a map that dated back probably about 1990 or probably 1995 of the state trail routes within the area, including the Red Cedar Trail, Chippewa River Trail, and the Old Abe Trail. And we worked with the DNR updating those maps. That's available on their website. And then also, there's printed copies. So, it's kind of fun working with the DNR on that particular project. The, during the course of 2019, the committee had major, had a number of partner organizations that they worked with, including West Central Regional Planning Commission, the Police Department, City-City Health Department, Volume One, the City Parks Division, and then also the Wisconsin DNR. In terms of the 2020 program that's before you today, this is kind of a sampling of some of the projects that are listed. And there's a number of ongoing projects in terms of input on the 2020 and then in the fall of 2021, street projects. The committee anticipates working on Bike Week activities again, most likely in June. As in previous years, the committee's been involved with the Bike Valet program over at Phoenix Park on the Thursday night concerts. They intend to continue doing that. And as I mentioned before, they intend to have additional educational and wellness fair booths at different activities throughout the year. They hope to provide input on the Safe Routes to Parks Plan. The actual draft of that will be available to staff now later on this month. And as I mentioned, we anticipate bringing that to council probably in March or April. Provide input on the Complete Streets Policy. This is in the city's strategic plan and the city's comprehensive plan, something that we've been talking about for a number of years. We kind of put it somewhat on hold as we went through the State Street process. And now, we're at the point where we want to move forward with that. Also, the committee would possibly provide some input on ordinance regarding electric scooters. We have been approached by the university in the last few weeks about researching the possibility of developing an ordinance that would license vendors for electric scooters. So, that's something that you probably will see at some point in the future in various forms. And then finally, looking at possibly sponsoring a winter mission project. And so, I got this idea from Scott Allen. He attended what's called the First Day Hike Event over in Menominee on New Year's Day. This is the event that's sponsored between the DNR and then the local community. And it involves going out onto the regional trail system on either a hike or a cross-country ski. And the thought is that this would work out very well in Eau Claire, working with the DNR and doing something on the Chippewa River Trail. So, we would do some of the planning for that in December and do that New Year's of next year. So, that's kind of a, just a quick overview of some of the things that are in the work program. There is a resolution before you that would consider approval of that work program.
Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Is there any questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregert?
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, just wanted to thank Mr. Ivory and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee members that have been working hard this last year and have a good vision for 2020. Really appreciate this. The, you know, one of the things that, you know, was attempted this last year was the Bicycle Friendly Community designation, another application. And unfortunately, we did not get silver as we were hoping for. But I think getting bronze is still something we should be very proud of as a city because the League of American Bicyclists still, actually keeps increasing the level of difficulty to achieve even the same designation from year to year because they keep wanting to raise the standards. And in fact, there's a number of communities that have reached platinum level, including in the City of Madison. And the League actually created a diamond-level designation, which is so far unreachable. So, I think it's something that obviously our staff has been working very hard on. So, I wanted to share my appreciation for that. And I do think that, you know, as part of our vision for the city, particularly with the Renewable Energy Action Plan coming up, the, having some sort of maybe more long-term goal at maybe gold by 2030 or something like that is something that we can talk about. But I think there's so many great things that come out of that application. So, and I think ultimately, it's something that a lot of entities beyond the city need to maybe be more involved with. So, I think we can look at those opportunities, like the business community and the university. And because there is a bicycle-friendly business program as well. But I think I do actually have a question as well, if that's okay.
For Mr. Ivory?
Yeah, for Mr. Ivory. Thank you. The, I guess in the 2019 work plan, there was, this was kind of added later in the process for approving it. But there was the special events bicycle parking policies, the bike rack policies. And it says in the status at the end of the year that it was, there was discussion about special event bicycle parking and that'll continue. So, I guess if you wouldn't mind fleshing out what the plans are for that in 2020? Because I don't necessarily see any reference to it in the work plan for 2020.
Actually, in the 2020 plan, it's listed, it's kind of grouped together in the, under input on projects, topics, and issues, it's listed, it's kind of grouped within that particular area there. The thought there was is that one of the discussions was possibility of providing bike racks for some of the special events. And one of the concerns that we had this past year was in if we were to purchase bike racks for some of those special events, where we would store those. And DEKI really didn't have much for storage space. I did talk with some of the DEKI staff in the last couple of days. They're moving their storage area from a smaller area downtown over to Vanbury. And they've indicated that they'll have larger space available. So, I think we can, they were, they indicated that they'd be willing to have that discussion again. So, it's kind of what we were talking about.
Yeah, thank you. I just missed it in there.
Any other questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Are we in our question or comment period? Have we moved this already?
Yeah, we have moved it.
Okay. Mr. Ivory, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to point out for folks here in the audience this evening, the, you know, the amount of change that can occur over such a short period of time. And I think our community has really seen a resurgence in And I think our community has really seen a resurgence in embracing multimodal transportation. And I think about the 1990s and the difficulty that city council had at that time, just even getting bike trails put in across our city. That was a very, very challenging thing for the city staff, the councils at that time. And, you know, fast forward roughly 20 to 25 years, and you can see the amount of change that happens where we have become a community that, you know, more truly embraces both bicycling and pedestrian, but also other modes of transportation. And what that means for our quality of life in our community. I think this Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, sorry, Committee really points to the work that advocates can do to help change culture in our community. And without a doubt, I would say, one of the things that people love about Eau Claire is the ability to access the bike trails, to be able to safely walk our streets, to walk to school, to walk to our parks, and the freedom that that, that provides people in our community. So just a hats off to Mr. Ivory, the committee itself, and the city council and city staff that have truly helped lead the way on this important issue.
Thank you, Councilmen. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 25 is a resolution approving a certified survey map with right-of-way dedication for Jeffers Ridge Road. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the council. This is item number three on the overview map here before you. Again, this is a map that we provide to the planning commission, so just reusing it here this evening. So apologies for any confusion with the numbering, but number three off of Jeffers Road, north of the North Crossing. The request again is to approve a certified survey map with right-of-way dedication. Aerial here, Jeffers Ridge Road has a portion of right-of-way already identified on the north side of Country Meadows North condominiums, already constructed here to the south. The, the kind of expanded dedication of the right-of-way of Jeffers Ridge Road would access Jeffers Ridge Twin Homes immediately to the north. That development has gone through its approvals as well. And now again, it's before you here for this additional access point, more specifically shown here, again, the north side of the Country Meadows North condominiums. Just for a quick background, it's the original layout for Country Meadows North condominiums. You can see, it says future public right-of-way. So again, kind of half of the portion of what's being proposed here this afternoon. Again, with this, the dedication of this small piece of right-of-way again would provide this extended Jeffers Ridge Road to the Jeffers Ridge Twin Homes subdivision to the north. And again, this construction of the proposed expansion of Jeffers Ridge Road would remove, or essentially incorporate, I should say, the current access to the condominiums. So it's kind of a shared access in a way, and then again, curving up to the north for the future development of the Twin Homes. This is presented to the planning commission last week and is before you with their recommendation for approval. Stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Allen? I don't see any.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 26 is a resolution approving a certified survey map with right-of-way dedication for the eastern half of Comet Court and the northern portion of Frisbee Lane. Mr. Allen?
Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of council. Look at the overview map here. This is item number four, located in what is known as the Planet's Streets in that general area. Again, this is also a certified survey map that is dedicating right-of-way and also providing for one-lot CSM. It shows the area a little bit more specifically in terms of what's being proposed for the right-of-way dedication along with the one-lot CSM. Then again, with the aerial photo showing more specifically the area in question. The CSM dedicates the eastern half of the right-of-way for the completion of Comet Court and the northern half, I'll jump back here quickly, and the northern half, or northern portion, I should say, of Frisbee Lane. CSM and right-of-way dedication will allow future residential development of properties along this segment of Comet Court. CSM for the western half of proposed Comet Court was approved in July of last year and which included three buildable lots, as well as incorporated a fourth existing lot, excuse me, fourth existing lot to north off Eddie Lane. Again, this is just a single-lot CSM. The applicant will likely come forward with further additional subdivision. This is R1 zoning, so it's all single-family detached homes in this area. Again, this is some infill development, as you can see in the existing subdivision. This was before the planning commission at their meeting last week as well and is before you with their recommendation for approval as well. Stand for any questions.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I was wondering if you've heard from any residents around the area about this?
Good question. I have not specifically heard from any individual residents located around here. There was some interested conversation from existing residents on the western half last summer. But at this point, again, there's kind of expectation of this moving forward, even at that time. So I've not heard anything additional since then.
Any other questions? I don't see any.
All right.
Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I'm just going to make a comment that as we, we talk about infill development, this is so appropriate for the city and makes it more affordable for people that, that want a newer home. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's, it already has service, you know, ready for it. We really like to see more infill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I was going to shut off again. Just wanted to say too, that I have outreach to the Neighborhood Association, the Airport Neighborhood Association, when it came last summer, let them know this was going on and then just with this, what's in the packet too. And I haven't heard anything negative or any feedback, so just wanted to pass that along as well.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 27 is consideration for appointment of councilmembers to various boards and commissions and committees. We do have two vacant spots on our council membership boards, commissions, and committees. And I'm asking councilmembers to see if anyone is interested in filling those positions. We have a revolving loan fund committee, which I have served on in the past, and I believe meets anywhere from four to six times to, to the, a year, four to six times a year, and certainly as an as-needed basis. Is there anyone here that has any interest in putting their name forward for that position?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinkhammer is nominating himself as a person of interest for the Resolving Loan Fund Committee. Is there anyone else that wishes to? Seeing none then by, I guess a show of, pardon? Do we have, we have two we can see? We do. So we can do the individual vote for this particular, and then we'll do a motion and a second on the resolution with the two, if that makes sense. So I guess we'll do by a show of hands and all those in favor of Councilmember Klinkhammer being appointed to the Resolving Loan Fund Committee?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations and thank you. The other position is the Visit Eau Claire Board, and maybe Councilmember Bergy can share with us the dates and days that, that meeting, usually when they meet?
I would love to. It's about, it's been a little off this year with a little more with the event center. There's been a little, it's been a little scattered, so I don't know how normal this year of meetings has been, but I, it's about once every quarter. And then there's different committees that we serve on. There's the Destination Development Committee, and then I believe the Exec Committee that we also have the opportunity to serve on, so that's an additional time. And that's about, I think, every quarter as well, so.
Okay.
And it's usually during the day the meetings are, which work out fantastic for me, so that's, that's been nice too.
Council, have any other questions in regards to the position? Is there anyone that has interest in putting their name forward? Councilmember Beaton? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to put their name forward? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. So then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this resolution is passed with the two names being added, Mr. Councilmember Klinkhammer for the revolving loan committee and Councilmember Beaton for the Visit Eau Claire Board. Is there any discussion regarding these two nominations or these new appointments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Again, thank you for those taking on that extra responsibility, it's greatly appreciated. So we'll move on to our ordinances for action. Agenda item number 28 is an ordinance creating section 14.04.110 entitled Lead Service Line Replacement and amending section 1.24030 entitled Deposit Schedule of the City of Eau Claire Code of Ordinances. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President.
This is for Mr. Pippinger?
It's for Mr. Pippinger, yeah. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Pippinger, we had spoken last night about the amount of refund that a person can receive. Can you remind me how, if we were interested in changing that amount at some later date, how we would go about doing that?
Sure, sure. It really is up to the community. I've contacted the DNR and asked them, so for us to change it, if you recall, we started with the program with a thousand-dollar reimbursement. And we didn't have, what I would say, a robust volunteer to change their lead service line out. We raised that to $2,000 because we were seeing that the amount of reimbursement was closer to that amount than a thousand. It was roughly half at the time, so we raised it. The DNR really, as far as our program goes in the utilization of the grant funding, it's up to us. And the process is, is just basically contacting the DNR and letting them know that we're going to raise our minimum up to, or our reimbursement amount up to a X number.
And that would be through a resolution?
Nope. It's just working, the city staff working with the DNR.
Oh, okay. I thought we had voted on that.
I, I don't recall if we voted on that. I think when we changed it, there, there was just a staff with the DNR. I, I don't believe, I think the initial I brought to the, to the council was explaining what our reimbursement would be. When we increased that, I don't believe there was a resolution needed to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. I know we had a little correspondence via email and also a question from yesterday that I raised about the potential and the experience of some, at least one person taking longer than three months to, to schedule a contractor to come and, and do, and replace the lead service line. So not sure if you were able to find anything more about that particular situation or how, if we need to adjust our, our ordinance at all to address some of the, those topics, but.
Yes, and I, and I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Christopherson this afternoon, and he explained the situation. It was a contractor that was running behind because they had a lot of work. He ended up hiring another contractor that the cost to replace it was greater than what the initial one. The initial contractor that he was working with was in that, around that $2,000. He did have a little bit of difficulty where his home wasn't where the water service was. So he said that there, that raised the cost a little bit, but primarily, the, the change was the contractor just having more work than what they could keep up with, so he fell behind on that. And that was, that was a lead service line that wasn't part of a street project. It was, was a lead service line that was after the fact. As we mentioned before, when we come through with some of our projects earlier, before 2017, 2018, this part had been taken care of, this part had not.
Thank you. Just have a follow-up to that. Does it typically take longer for a, or less time for a contractor to, to, to replace a lead service line if there's already a street reconstruction project?
Yes, and that's a good question. And it also saves money because a lot of the work is already done. They, they actually, how they handle this from, from this point here during a street construction project, we have this all tore up already, all the way to the curb stop. From this point, they mull this in, so they don't, they don't open trench this all the way to the house. They actually mull it in and they open, they get it to the side of the house where they're going to enter the, the foundation to the meter. And so the cost is much cheaper for the contractor to do it under construction.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Pippinger, did this get, this ordinance get a review through the health depart, or sorry, the City-City County Board of Health?
Yes, they approved, they, they reviewed it in their December meeting and they approved it, recommended approval at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Thanks for coming up. So then on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Laura, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I just want to speak verbally in this meeting that there was a robust conversation last evening for people that may want to look at the public hearing about hardship cases, affordability, application process, timeframes. It was, it was really a wonderful presentation by Mr. Pippinger, and I, I thought that what a really great service to our residents and just really well-cared-for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'll add to that, just to, you know, this is a big deal, this ordinance, and I think, you know, Mr. Pipinger's leadership, our city staff's leadership on this is showing how serious lead and the removal of lead pipes in our community really is. This has been a multi-year process, hundreds of thousands of dollars invested, and it's really about doing what's right for the future, this ordinance is. It's going to help us try to secure more funding, it's also going to help with current over 800 different lead pipes that are going to homes right now, so this is a big deal. It kind of sets us, I think, in a stronger position, and I trust that our city, our community services department, Mr. Pipinger, will work with community residents who maybe have a hardship, are not able to afford it. And I think we need to also check back in as a council in a year's time or so and see how is the program developing? Are the amounts, the right amounts for reimbursement? And keep an eye on that. So thank you for your work on this, Mr. Pipinger.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I just, I sit on the City County Board of Health and just to, can I add on to your question, Councilmember Worthman, that we did, we also had a robust conversation, it's a good word for it, at the Board of Health, and I think, and I learned from that discussion and presentation from the Health Department, is that the greatest risk is when there is a partial replacement, and that's when the lead, I mean, it's actually, it's when it's disrupted, that's when people are mostly at risk, and that's actually more dangerous than not disrupting it. So I think this ordinance is very important, that when there is that disruption, that we need to get it completely fixed. Another big point that we talked about was that there are resources available made through this ordinance, and I think that's also very important. The Health Department was very concerned, as I know council is too, about this negatively impacting financially people of limited means, so it's also a very important part, and I know staff worked hard on making sure that resources are available, so thank you for that. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Any other discussion? On a motion then by Councilmember, I moved it already, yeah, all right. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 29 is an ordinance amending chapter 16.24 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Electrical Code. Good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. This ordinance amends chapter 16.24 as noted, which is the Electrical Code in the City Code of Ordinances. This is being done in order to comply with current state of Wisconsin Electrical Code standards, so it's really not changing the way that we inspect electrical services or issue electrical permits, things of that sort, in the city of Eau Claire, simply looking to modify the current code, which has some modifications already that perhaps are divergent from the Wisconsin Electrical Code. So removing those, so you see mostly, if not almost exclusively, stricken language in the proposed ordinance modifying chapter 16.24. During the time that this was first introduced at council, back on December 10th, and today we did receive a letter from the Department of Safety and Professional Services, DSPS, who oversees commercial electrical permitting, inspecting such, and provides that jurisdictional approval to the city of Eau Claire and other cities, municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. We did receive conditional approval, essentially to continue with our delegation, as it were, to operate the Electrical Code here in the city of Eau Claire, again, conditionally, again, pending this modification to the code here before you this evening. So stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 30 is an ordinance amending chapter 10.20 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eau Claire entitled Parking Meters in Lots as it relates to the Ali Phillips Memorial Public Library parking lot. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Solberg? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I simply want to comment, I've always been concerned about parents and children crossing the street for those drop-offs or, this is such a good and easy solution to what otherwise would be a very dangerous, and the future plans for that entrance for the library just gets better and better, so I'm really grateful that this has been brought forward and I'll certainly support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Anderson? Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinances for introduction. Agenda item number 31, an ordinance rezoning a property located at West 3380, Highway 37, from public to C3P and to adopt a general development plan with the site plan for plumbers and steam fitters UA Local 434. Agenda item number 32 is an ordinance rezoning a property located at 318 Elm Street from RM to RMP and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for a six-unit apartment building. Agenda item number 33 is an ordinance amending the general development plan for a C3P-zoned property located on the east side of London Road, south of Damon Street for a commercial building. Agenda item number 34 is an ordinance, in accordance with section 66.0217 Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the city of Eau Claire, particularly to the 16th Assessment Ward, 4th Aldermanic District, 1266 County Highway F, Town of Wheaton, Chippewa County, as shown on the planning drawing number 20-1A. Per Wisconsin statutes, an annexation ordinance requires two-thirds vote of elected members of the governing body, therefore eight affirmative votes of the 11 elected council members are required for adoption. Agenda item number 35 is a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reapportionment of the Aldermanic districts of the city of Eau Claire. Again, adoption of the charter ordinance requires two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore eight affirmative votes are required of the 11 elected council members. And then the last ordinance for, I'm sorry, not the last, number 36, ordinance amending chapter 2.48 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eau Claire entitled Board of Review. Agenda number 37, an ordinance creating chapter 2.67 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eau Claire entitled Housing Opportunities Commission. And then agenda item number 38, an ordinance amending 2.72.010 entitled City of Eau Claire Pay Plan adopted specifically those parts there pertaining to the police patrol local nine employees. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these ordinances this evening?
Yes.
I'll second. Motioning to take up agenda item number...
38.
38, and we have a second. Are there any questions for Ms. Seltin in regards to this discussion? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. I'm sorry, am I out of order there? City Attorney next.
If I could offer a suggestion, I think the first matter is taking a vote on the motion to suspend rules.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Takes a two-thirds vote.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second to suspend. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
So we will take up agenda item number 38. Is there any questions for Ms. Seltin? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. That moves us on to announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Welcome to 2020. You've got a lot queued up here, so just looking at the upcoming meeting and these ordinance, so. Just a couple of quick things following this meeting. We've got a work session up in the North Conference Room to talk about the 2020 road projects, and we've had some interest in a movie that's happening on Thursday night. It's called Cracked Up. It's a documentary on the impact of childhood trauma, and I just wanted to let you know that even though the website says it's sold out, we did look into that today, and it does appear that there's another 300 seats, so it's in the RCU Theater at the JAMP, or at JAMP, it's the RCU Theater at the Pablo. It's at 6:30 on Thursday night, so if you did have interest in that, know that at least it does appear that there's still some seats available, and it should be a good program. And then Friday morning, if you haven't signed up, the State of the County presentation is at Exit Issues, 7 o'clock at the Lismore, and I hope you're able to attend that, and if you haven't signed up, contact Kathy, so thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Peters. Does council have any announcements? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. I would like to, I guess we saw it in our email, but the public maybe doesn't quite know, but did want to congratulate Councilmember Bergy for being appointed to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Board of Directors and was able to attend the last two annual conferences with her, and I think she'll do a great job helping represent cities across the state and advocating for the interests of villages and towns as well, so just wanted to mention that for folks, and feel free to reach out to her, anyone out there who would like to be more well-connected with what we can do to collectively advance the interests of cities and towns and villages, so.
Congrats.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Are there any other announcements from council? If there then is no objection from council, we are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148.